Well, welcome, everyone. We're going to go ahead and open this meeting. Welcome to the August 27th City Council meeting for the City of Citrus Heights.
July.
Oh, I'm sorry, July. Sorry, I want to be in August, so. Anyway, July 27th. So it's now 6:03, so I'll go ahead and open the meeting. And can I ask for a roll call, please?
Councilmember.
Wait a second. Sorry. Flag salute.
Okay.
Brett, would you please? I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the republic which stands in the wide nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. No, we're out of sync there. Okay. Now can I have the roll call, please?
Sure. Councilmember Karpinski-Costa.
Present.
Councilmember Lopez Taft.
Here.
Councilmember Middleton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Daniels.
Here.
And Mayor Schaefer.
Here. Next item, please.
This meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and ATTU versed cable systems. This meeting is closed captioned and livestreamed at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replay is on Monday, July 31st at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14, and the meeting can also be viewed on the city's YouTube channel.
Next item, please.
Next item is approval of agenda.
What's the pleasure of the council?
Can I move that we move item 10 up to be heard after item 5?
No objection.
Any concerns with that?
No.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Was there a motion and a second?
Oh, yes. May I have a motion, please?
I move.
I'll second.
That we move item 10 up to be heard before, oh, excuse me, after item 5.
Yes. So I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. Next item, please.
The next item is public comment. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, please fill out a speaker identification sheet and give it to myself, the city clerk. Speakers are limited to five minutes each. When your name is called, please step forward to the podium and state your name for the record.
Okay. With that, I have two speaker cards. Can I ask David Warren to come to the podium and say your piece?
Good evening. About two weeks ago, I was sitting in the swimming pool at the 24 Hour Fitness and listening to a conversation between three very strange individuals, one of whom was stating that if the police ever came to take away his weapon, he'd shoot them. I've been watching the news, and the division in this country has become frightening. It is clear to me that in the upcoming election, even here in California, there's going to be a great deal of stress and division, and unfortunately for some, they will present that in violent manners. It is unfortunate that I see violence coming to Citrus Heights, because when I came here almost 30 years ago, I could leave my back door unlocked and not worry about it, but times change for everybody and everything. But facing the reality, it's time to start planning for 2024 for our community. The police not only have to service our community, but there's going to be mutual aid requirements that may come forward in Sacramento and Elk Grove or adjacent areas. And simply put, we don't have adequate protection and facilities for our police officers. We need to boost them to full staffing, and we need to provide them with all the necessary equipment. Unfortunately, the manner in which the police department is now funded is not going to provide adequate funding. It's time to create a special assessment district so that we pay for the quality police services we're going to need. We can't wait until 2024 and all of a sudden say, turn on the spigot. We have to start planning now. I am truly fearful, for the first time in my life, that civil disorder is going to come in a significant manner. I remember civil disorder was sitting down in sprawl hall and throwing toilet paper out the window. Now civil disorder is discharging an AK-47. We can't allow that. We need to take care of it now. The planning can start now. If we have the time in this community to consider a special school district, we certainly have the time now to plan for the funding of an adequate police force in our community to protect and serve in a time that we're going to have a great deal of difficulty. I recently observed four patrol cars at the intersection of Auburn and Greenback, and what frightened me wasn't the fact that there were four patrol cars there, it was the knowledge that almost 25% of the police department was at one location. If something serious had happened, we weren't going to be able to adequately respond. So I ask you tonight to set on the agenda in the upcoming weeks and direct staff to prepare a proposal for a citizens committee to create a special assessment district in our community, funded by an additional property tax to fully fund and prepare for what is disturbing, and so we can plan and make sure that we don't look back and say, oh, my God, we should have done something. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Good to see you, David.
Next up, I have Kathy Morris and Bill Shirley of Chayson, who would like to say a few things.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I am Kathy Morris. I am the outgoing president of Chayson, Citrus Heights Area 7, 8, and 9, and I'm introducing you to Bill Shirley, who is the incoming president of Chayson. And we want to remind you about National Night Out. Bill?
Thank you. I've worked with Kathy now for the last five years, serving as her vice president. I think you'd all know who she is. She's made her presence known, and we've been able to build great relationships with you and the city's staff, and we've been so well supported by the City of Citrus Heights. So I, first of all, want to thank you, and I will do my best to continue doing that and reaching out to you when we need to, and once again, relying on our staff, our police department, so we can be a support to the city and to our community. I think we had 90 people out at our last meeting, because they were talking about our famous intersection at Fair Oaks and Old Auburn, and plus, we also had an election. And that was great to see, and then how do we maintain that? And that'll be our challenge. Also, just a reminder, you know National Night's coming up. It's this coming Tuesday. It'll be over at Cbar C, and we're going to look forward to seeing all of you there. We can feed you, we can entertain you, and if you want to go down a 24-foot dry slide, go ahead. We'll make sure pictures are taken. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Bill. Congratulations. I have a question on the next item, this next speaker sheet from Tracy Vasquez, and she wants to talk about streetlights. Is this related to the lighting and landscaping item?
I don't think so.
Okay. All right. So come on up, and let's hear what you have to say about streetlights.
Good evening. My name is Tracy Vasquez. I live on, excuse me, Fallworth Street, which is over by the library. It's in the older area of Citrus Heights. I've lived here for 20 years. My house was built in 1958. There's a lot of houses in my little neighborhood that were built in the 50s, 60s, 70s, 80s, and 90s. My street is the next street over from Van Maron, and it is used as a thoroughfare for many people, people walking their dogs, people that are cutting, they don't want to walk down Van Maron, so they cut down our street to cut to the other areas behind our area, and people who are looking to do things that they shouldn't be doing. We've had our cars broken into, we've had stuff stolen off of our yard, we had a memorial cloth from my son, who was killed over in Afghanistan, that was taken off of our front porch. Just little things. It's not the dollar value of them, but it's somebody who has come onto our property and taken stuff. Our street has no streetlights. There are three other streets that intersect my street that all have streetlights, and our street, as well as Kittery and Cobalt, which is a main thoroughfare, have no streetlights. And I don't expect them to go up in the next month or two. I went on to ClickIt, I posted a request for streetlights, and I was given via email a note that said the city does not fund those, and if I wanted them, I had to pay for them myself. I've worked for the government for 33 years, I just recently retired about a year and a half ago. I know how much streetlights would cost, $10,000 to $15,000. If I had $10,000 to $15,000, I certainly wouldn't spend it out of my own pocket on streetlights. I don't expect streetlights to stop people from coming and breaking into cars and stealing, but it is a deterrent. And I'm just asking that you look at the older area of Citrus Heights where I live. There are many, many streets that have no streetlights, and that could be helpful if they did. There's a lot of senior citizens that live in our area as well. There's a lot of people that walk their pets at nighttime, and it's a safety and a security issue. So I'm just asking that you consider it, maybe start planning for it and funding it in future fiscal years, but I don't think that it should be on the homeowner to provide city streetlights. I think it should be the city that provides those in those areas when streetlights weren't something that was required back in the 50s. And that's all I had to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. With that, move on to the next item, please.
The next item is comments by councilmembers and regional board updates.
All right. Let's start with Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's see. First on my list is the Cal Cities Legislative Update. We reaffirmed our priorities and kind of narrowed down what bills we're going to be focusing on come September, and our four key priorities are to protect and expand investments to prevent and reduce homelessness for each city, you know, throughout our state, also to increase the supply of affordability in housing while retaining local decision-making, improve public safety in California communities, so increasing our public safety and what that looks like and where that funding is going to come from, from the state budget, and finally, to protect, increase, and modernize revenue streams for local priorities such as streetlights and public safety. And we're going to oppose any efforts that would reduce or eliminate funding from cities, including unfunded mandates. So that was a very productive two days on the Board of Directors there. So I came back and I did the, I went to talk to Eric at Parks and Rec. He is the Director of Community Programs. There's an awesome event coming up. It's a swim night and a movie night that's coming up, August 12th, at Rush Park, at the Rush Pool. I encourage everyone to get out there. I know it's right after school starts, but I think, you know, with the kiddos coming back and kind of being a little bit wound up, it'll be a great way for folks to kind of relax and enjoy something that's in our community, and it's free. I also went to the Sylvan Middle School. They opened their first footsole court, which is basically street soccer, or as I like to call it, pickleball for soccer. I mean, it's a half, it's like a third of a soccer field. It's on the asphalt. They converted a basketball court, and kids can go out there during the day, during the recess. They don't have to wear special shoes. They can wear their sneakers and play a quick game of soccer and, you know, and run around and have a great, great amount of time. It was put on by Sac Republic in partnership with Kellogg's. I got to take a picture with Tony the Tiger. Yes, I also let my children take a picture with Tony the Tiger, too, but I'd had to make sure Tony the Tiger, you know, I love Frosted Flakes when I was a kid, and that was a great moment to do that. And let's see, what else did we do? City Scoop. Oh, my gosh, so many folks came out to City Scoop. That was amazing and a fun time. My boys enjoyed it. I got to see a different part of the community that I don't regularly see, and it was so nice to see folks coming out and enjoying Leatherbee's Ice Cream, which is the best ice cream in our city. And that wraps it up for me, Mayor.
Great. Thank you. Dr. Jana Karpinski-Costa, what have you been up to?
Well, I went to City Scoop, too, and I'll ditto Councilmember Middleton's comment that it was incredible. It was, I've always liked Area 5, you know, I know you're, I always liked Area 5 and get to see some people I hadn't seen for a while, get to, the city staff did a terrific job putting that together and to remind people that you can rent the community block trailer. It's got everything in it to have a block party. And so they had that there, and Megan did a wonderful job, and all the rest of the staff putting it together. It was great. And the ice cream was, you know, ice cream, but no chocolate. There was no chocolate ice cream. And so, anyway, City Scoop's good. I did have a mosquito meeting, you know, I'm a fan of the mosquitoes, and to remind people to report day-biting mosquitoes, and those are the invasive mosquitoes. Normally, the mosquitoes that carry West Nile do not come out in the daytime, they are the dusk-and-dawn mosquitoes. So, but if you get one for the daytime, these are the bad mosquitoes. So we need to know. FightTheBite.net is our website. You can report anything there. You can call the district if you see a neglected swimming pool, if you have one of those little bugs, those bees. My brain is dead. We help you with any problem you have by way of vectors. I spoke to Area 6 about mosquitoes last Tuesday, and it's always a privilege to see Area 6 and 2, they, 2 and 6 meet together, and I give presentations. If you want one, just let me know. I get, I'm ready to go. I get my little PowerPoint, my little, I hand out some free mosquito swipes and hot to trot when it comes to talking about mosquitoes. I went to my SOAR meeting, which is Area 10, and I tell you, normally I don't report that, but we had Viva there, and this is the most incredible dog. I was just, my mouth was open the whole time. This is a postal dog, and what she does is she works for the city, and she's a little English spaniel, and she smells packages for drug money, and she is, she has collected, I forget how many thousands of dollars in drug money, which gets confiscated. And she's an incredible dog. She, they did a demo where she socked the package, we hid the pack, her trainer hid the package. It's Officer Emily Lombardo, and she's willing to give presentations to groups about her dog. So it's E. Lombardo at citrusheights.net. Wonderful trainer, wonderful dog, wonderful dog. I also went to see this new overlay that we're going to look into. It's a rubberized rubber that they, it's on Butternut, if you want to go look at it. And so it's, it's a new way to do an overlay, a chip, what do you say, is chip seal? Is that what you call it? I guess chip, a sealant on the roads that is darker, stays blacker longer, made with rubber tires, less expensive to apply, that we could do more roads if we use that product. So only one little section was done, is a kind of a test section, and I think at the next meeting, after the road's been restripped, Regina's going to show us pictures of before and after, so we can see how that looked. And so it's exciting to see if we have an alternative to the more expensive way to pave our streets. And that's, everybody else's, the heat killed us all for a lot of meetings, so kind of, I hope you all stayed cool, and thank you so much.
Great. Jane, what have you been up to? Councilmember Jane Taft.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Lot going on as well. I did an interview at Woodside K8. That is the newly identified innovation school. Very excited about that. My children went to Woodside, and so I'm very interested in seeing how they define the innovation part of the school. I attended the Chayson Board Elections. Always an exciting time to see new leaders step up. I actually like contested board nominations, because that just means more people are interested in leading. And so I appreciate that about my Neighborhood Association, and of course, we had a great presentation from our city staff on what's going on in Old Auburn. I also went to an interesting event at the Associated Builders and Construction of Northern California, and they have a new training facility. It's a trades organization. They have a training facility out in North Highlands, and as an elected official, they let me speak, so I talked up Citrus Heights and really wanting to bring business, and a business owner who just recently purchased space in the, in the city came up to me and said how wonderful it was to work with our city staff for starting his business location here, and so we got more kudos, not in our city, about our city. Also attended, of course, City Scoop, which was just the highlight of my, my day, because Leatherbee's is in my district, and I got to thank them personally. I also attended our Cal Cities event, where they also held elections. And again, finding, finding individuals to step up when they're already doing other roles is just an incredible thing to witness, because these are selfless individuals who are looking to lead and influence and, and do good things for, on behalf of the cities here in California. And finally, today I had my library board meeting, where they reported, last time we had a meeting, I, I reported that I had my new King's library card, and they reported that they had actually created or invited over 1,400 new subscribers to the library because of this effort and partnership with the Kings. So membership is growing, more people going to the library, more people discovering the joy of reading and interacting in all the different services that the library has. That's it for me.
Great. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, sir. I also went to City Scoop. Imagine that. If there's free ice cream, we'll be there. It was a great event. It really was a lot of fun, and it was nice, neighbors coming out, seeing each other at a fun time. The next one is August 16th, 6:30 p.m. at Sylvan Community Center. Some people don't know where that is. That's across from the Veterans Center. And if you don't know where that is, call us and we'll tell you. So it's a lot of fun. Come on out and, and have some ice cream and meet your neighbors in that area. Today, I did attend the airborne meeting, not too much, just some continued good news about the use of hydrogen as an alternative fuel source in the future, and I think that's, the nice thing about that is I think there's just more and more realization that we're not going to be able to electrify everything. It's just not going to work. And so hydrogen is the future, in my opinion. Also, if you really don't have anything to do, on October 5th and 6th, there is a biomass use seminar in winters. You can find out what they're doing with biomass and, and how that's helping our air. Also, a couple of days ago, had my board meeting at the Regional Transit. Lots of things there. Oh, my gosh, lots of things. Just some numbers so that you know how big Regional Transit is. Over the last fiscal year, they hired 259 people. Just remarkable. If you do take the bus and light rail and you happen to go through Watt and I-80, you probably don't enjoy yourself there too much, but you should know that there is a project that's, I guess, final stage approval, a $19 million project to really upgrade that, that site and to make it a whole lot more user-friendly. They did talk about, and we've talked a little bit about this before, the Smart Ride update that the grant has basically come to an end. They will, RT will continue to fund Smart Ride for now. It will be changed. There'll be some areas that you cannot go to. It used to be you probably could go a little further and whatnot, and the times will be 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. So kind of look for changes in that. It still covers 165 square mile area, when you throw in all the different areas that, that you can get around in, but it's just not going to be as available as it was before. I did go to Birmingham, Alabama, I think it was last week, as part of my role on the RT Board, I went to the American Public Transportation Association Seminar. Lots of great stories, lots of different ways to do public transit from all over the country, a lot of ways to do different boards, and one of the nice things about it, going back to Smart Ride, is that there are agencies out there that do contract with Uber, Lyft, and whatnot to reduce the cost of providing smart rides. And I took Uber while I was there, and we went five miles in nine minutes, and it cost $10. And that's about a fifth of what it costs if you take an Uber, excuse me, a smart ride here. And so hopefully, hopefully, we're stirring up some, some energy behind contracting in the smart ride industry and help people out. National Night Out was mentioned, August 1st. Just so we're clear, if you want to go over to the Cbar C event, it's probably right up there as the top event and, and whatnot, but there are also all kinds of events going on in your neighborhoods. So look online and whatnot and find a nice spot, and know that they're a lot of fun. There will be food at most of them, and so that, that should get you out there, too. But get out, see your neighbors, get involved, and, and have a good time, too. Please remember that on August 10th, school opens. Get involved with your kid's education. Don't expect somebody else just to take care of your kid all the time, and get involved and, and get involved in protecting your child, too. Nobody's going to protect your child better than you. So keep your eyes open. If you see something, say something. Don't be concerned with, you know, being labeled as somebody who simply is just a worry wart or whatever. If you see something around your kid's school, report it. That's it.
Great. So now it's my turn. So I sit on Saqog, and Saqog has been on hiatus for the last month or so, or we have the next meeting coming up, I think it's next Friday. It's just a luncheon, so I look forward to reporting more on that. I also attended City Scoop. It happened to be kind of right in the front of my neighborhood. I could walk from my house right up to the park and enjoy the ice cream, the mango ice cream was pretty amazing from Leatherbee's. So definitely, I highly recommend that. The Citrus Heights Education Committee kicked off on, on the 17th, so it was good to see that that's moving forward. And one, one thing about that is that when it, when it comes to streetlights, I know there's a huge amount of concern out there, and let's just put it this way, I can't really speak to anything yet, but we'll be looking, thinking hard about what we can do to remedy that situation. So anyhow, with that, I will move on to the next item.
The next item is consent calendar items for and five.
Move approval?
Second.
Okay. Moved by Vice Mayor Daniels, second by Jana Karpinski-Costa. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. Next item, please.
So now we will be moving to item 10, which is a department report. The subject is Crosswoods Community Park Rabbit Update, given by the Police Department. We also had some speaker cards. Did you get those?
Yes, we have, we have speakers when?
Perfect. They're here with me as well.
Okay.
So if you had a speaker card, please join. I'm Tiffany Campbell. I'm your police. Sorry, we'll share. Kristi, if, and our kid.
So I have speaker cards for Jackie Vaughn and Katie Franco. Can you identify yourselves? Okay, great. Thank you.
I'm going to ask that our guest speakers come and speak first to the council, if that would be all right.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Please go ahead, Kristi.
Hello. Thank you for having me. My name's Katie Franco. I'm a lifelong animal advocate and volunteer with Only Sunshine Sanctuary. I've worked and volunteered for several animal welfare organizations, such as San Diego Humane, Red Rover, Santa Barbara County Animal Shelter, Bradshaw, and Front Street in Sacramento. So rabbits are often seen as livestock, but they're actually the third most popular pet after cats and dogs. I've had all sorts of pets, such as cats, dogs, rabbits, reptiles, and I can tell you, rabbits are just as affectionate and smart as all these other animals, but unlike them, they're prey animals, so people often think of them as just kind of objects. So people kind of treat them like objects and like livestock. So the ones that are being abandoned at Crosswoods Community Park are no different. They're completely different than wild rabbits, because they don't have the instincts to survive, but they deserve the same five freedoms as other domestic animals. And I don't know if you're familiar with the five freedoms, but this was a thing started by organizations such as American Veterinary Medical Association, ASPCA, and just about every animal shelter and animal organization in the world. But these five freedoms are freedom from hunger and thirst, freedom from discomfort, freedom from pain, injury, and disease, freedom to express normal behavior, and freedom from fear and distress. And the rabbits at the park do not have any of these freedoms currently, unfortunately. So we ask that the city works with shelters and rescues to find solutions for these rabbits instead of letting people continue to abandon rabbits there and allow people to keep coming, bringing their kids to the bunny park without realizing how actually cruel it is, because so many of the animals there are actually getting sick and injured and all horrible things we've seen. And the rabbits are doing damage to the buildings. They're burrowing under the library and the community center. They attract rodents with the foods people bring, and there's a deadly rabbit pandemic going around called the Rabbit Hemorrhagic Disease Virus Type 2, RhGV2, that we have to vaccinate all our bunnies against, and it's really bad and being tracked by, you know, all the public health organizations. So some of the solutions that we'll hear from Tiffany today, we definitely support them, public education around signage and education of staff at the public, at the library and at the community center, educating people on the difference between wild and domestic rabbits, grants for shelters and rescues such as, or helping the park bunnies. A spay-neuter clinic for rabbits especially would be fantastic, because a lot of vets around the area don't spay and neuter rabbits specifically, because it requires certain knowledge. So, yeah, so thank you for having us, and thank you to Tiffany so much for working with us and giving us the time and space to have this conversation. Do it for the bunnies. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Jackie. I'm representing Sacramento Rabbit I'm representing Sacramento Rabbit Advocates, also with Only Sunshine Sanctuary as well. I think about a few months ago, we came to the Citrus Heights, uh, council meeting and talked about the rabbit situation, and during the last few months, we've been meeting with Tiffany, um, from the Animal Services Department and Police Department. So we're really happy to have these community conversations with our local government agencies. So I just want to say thank you so much, Tiffany, and also to Placer County to working on some solutions. We're really excited to hear them and we're here to help you all and just make it a community effort. Thank you.
Is that all the speaker cards?
Yes, that's all the speaker cards.
Okay, well, great. Come on and join me. Thank you. Good evening, Council. Mayor Schaefer and Vice, uh, Mayor Daniels. I am Tiffany Campbell. I am your Police Services Manager from the Citrus Heights Police Department. I have a unique position in that I oversee our records unit and our front counter of customer service. I also oversee our code enforcement and rental housing unit, and I also manage our Animal Services Unit, which has brought me forward tonight. I'm very proud to speak with all of you to let you know the progress that we've made. And tonight before me and joining me are folks who have spoke previously with their displeasure about actions with regard to the rabbits at the park. And, um, specifically who I have with me is our managing, excuse me, our managing partner from Placer County Animal Services, and she's here to answer any questions as well. So before you tonight, if you will, I will give you the history. I'll lightly touch on our citizen concerns, and I'm proud to share with you all of the solutions that we've come together by spearheading a major stakeholder meeting. And I'm very proud because you'll see that we have all services provided, in which, which is commented in on our first speaker card. Uh, next slide, please. Thank you. So as we know, of course, the history, rabbits have been in the park for decades. We all agree and understand that. We learned through a big conversation with all of us involved, at one time there must have been more than fifteen of us, to include our Chief Building Inspector, our Animal Services Team, our Commander, our Director of the Sunrise Parks and Rec, the Manager of the Placer County Animal Shelter, myself, advocates, veterinarians, a manager from the Crest Retirement Community. All of those folks came together and so many more, code enforcement and our, or, excuse me, and our Animal Services Officer. We all took the time to come together to hear one another's concerns and learn how we could help each other, and I'm very proud to share with you what we've done. We understood and we learned that, um, you can see by this picture that there is habitat research that indicated there's a mixture of breeds at our local park. We have wild rabbits, which are thin and stealthy and able to, uh, get away quickly from their predators, that's how they're built, and then we have our domestic feral rabbits, which are a little bit more round and not really made to stay out there in the wild. It's natural that they procreated, and that's what we learned is that our advocates are out there to try to help these particular rabbits. So through conversation, we learned that, um, if we used education with one another to understand what the advocates were out there to do, which is help to collect the domestic rabbits and get them spayed and neutered and have them adopted out, that would be beneficial. The advocates are not there to touch the wildlife, and I think that's very important that we make sure we understand that. And through the signage at the park, there was a common understanding of what the difference was. Also at the park, there was a conversation about the difference between the two rabbits, and that being shared with the retirement community out there was very beneficial. And some damaged relationships from the past came together and folks were actually making friends and being collaborative. So through this process, what we learned is that, um, everybody has the same goal, which is to have a higher quality of life for our animals and to ensure that illegal dumping's not happening. We did not find that there's, we have not caught anyone ever illegally dumping at the park. It's not to say that it doesn't happen. We have not been out there to catch that, okay? But moving forward, here is our plan together. We're taking a multifaceted educational approach, where we will do education through our website and really showing that Citrus Heights cares. Uh, we are going to talk about prevention and goals. Specifically, there will be a scheduled and supported predetermined rescue day. So the park will know that they're out, out there, the community will know that they're out there, and we will have a code enforcement officer or an Animal Services Officer present to help with this. It won't be, um, every day. We talked about as a team that it could be a few times a year, specific to when these rabbits are primarily, um, procreating, should we say? Or, and there. The whole goal again is to offer support, and the team had asked for a spay and neuter clinic, and I'm proud to report that our Placer County Animal Services Shelter has agreed, may I say the amount? The team was asking for fifteen or ten or fifteen rabbits to be spayed or neutered, and Placer County has offered to take care of twenty, which is four thousand dollars. This is a big delight for all of us, and I know everybody's very happy with that solution because that helps the rabbits that are domestic become adoptable by others, and that really is ultimately the goal. So with that said, we agreed that we would encourage our community to report illegal dumping of the animals, and most importantly, we're extremely thankful for the opportunity and the partnership that was created through the Director of the Park and through ourselves at the Police Department and Animal Services, and truly to stand before you, to have the folks before you that were displeased with the, uh, lack of service in your perception, allowed us to open up communication and come together as a group and really show that Citrus Heights cares. I'm really proud of this endeavor, so thank you very much. Any questions? Next slide.
Questions or comments from Council? Dr. Gina? Dr. Gina Karpinski-Costa, who happens to be a veterinarian?
I'm the veterinarian on the group here. You didn't, you don't mention anything about prior, uh, testimony at the podium was that these rabbits are also suffer from various ear mites, illnesses. I don't see anything in your plan to treat the, the ones that are there that have issues. Is, is that part of your plan?
Part of the plan, yes. Part of the plan is first to ensure we had thorough communication with the right folks with this new outlook on what was in the past is in the past and that we're here to help today, our current team. So pulling in our Placer County Animal Services and letting them understand what the needs are for an injured or, uh, a rabbit that has something in its ear, or whatever the case may be. We needed to start that dialogue to understand where do they go and how do they get there? And this partnership right here between the founder of the Only Sunshine Rabbit Group and our Manager of the Placer County Animal Services is allowing that conversation to happen and make determinations on, do we need to take it to a vet? Can we get a donation made? And just really understand what the needs are.
We, we should do like a little fundraiser, adopt a bunny or something.
We'd love that. We did talk about, um, at the retirement community, how perhaps they could help foster these bunnies and, and those kinds of things.
Thought about bringing a bunny for you guys.
We were going to bring a bunny, yes.
You know, the, the Halloween, the, the band puts on a Halloween, and you should have a booth at there and, and kind of recruit people to participate in the community effort.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we're working on a lot of education. We want to make sure that the community not only knows, um, that they don't belong here, but also how to safely adopt, um, and what it looks like in your home to have a rabbit and keep it safe. So yeah, we would love to do outreach at any of your guys' seminars.
What's the population of the rabbits at Crosswoods?
It was, so we've, in two years, we've rescued over a hundred rabbits primarily from Crosswoods Community Park. Uh, right now, the current population is down to six.
How many?
Six.
Six?
Six. One, two, three, four, five, six. That is it.
Where'd the other ninety-four go?
Uh, they've been rescued by us, spayed, neutered, medical care, and we've had over seventy adopted out in the last two years.
Well, that's cool. That should be easy to keep up, I mean, now that you have a low number.
Yes.
Of course, they're induced ovulators, so you get...
Did I answer your question?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Any other? Vice Mayor Daniels?
Yeah, just, um, ovulators?
They're induced ovulators, they...
So, it's okay. They're, they're my children watching.
Cats, and cats.
Um, so it kind of helped with that question being answered that there's only six, but I, what I was going to ask was, um, this offer to spay and neuter twenty, um, does that mean also that whoever might adopt that rabbit does not incur that cost?
That is correct.
We do not accrue any cost to adopters. We've taken all that cost, we still have, so there's six rabbits at the park, we still have sixteen in our care that need to be spayed and neutered. So that's where that twenty would really come in handy, because the sixteen that we had came from the park that still need to be neutered.
And, and so is it an obstacle if, if the animal is not spayed and neutered to, to adopt it out?
Yes, because they multiply like rabbits.
Well, they can't multiply by themselves. True, but they can't multiply by themselves.
No, but rabbits do great in care.
Not yet.
Um, sometimes you take a rabbit home, it wants a buddy, just like your cat or dog. You bring home a rabbit, then you're, you're opening that up to problems. So just like cats and dogs at the shelter, we only adopt out spayed and neutered and vaccinated animals.
And actually, uh, rabbits are litter box trained, so when you get them neutered and spayed, they're even more.
Yeah.
They all, they just, you go litter box.
It helps their hormones like cats and dogs.
And it helps you want to keep them as a pet because they're not spraying your house.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay. So I'm going to play devil's advocate just a little bit, because I know there's people out there that are going to be concerned about this. So if we have, we're concerned about predators and disease and many of these other things, why hasn't nature taken care of it?
Because they multiply too fast for nature.
They can't, there's not enough predators out there. I see coyotes running around town. I see lots of...
They get hit by cars, we find bodies chewed up by coyotes, we find that, uh, they are in a protected area. So if we drop them off in the wild, they're not going to make it very long. They are in your park and slightly protected.
But they've, they've been there for forty years, though.
And then...
And that's the thing that...
And the babies, the babies are blind, hairless, blind, they, they, they're totally, so the baby's survival rate is small.
Extremely small. We actually had two litters that were born in the park, none of them survived.
Yeah, but there were a hundred rabbits there.
But they continue to be dumped also. And then also part of it is, say you take your rabbit at home, you spay and neuter it, you keep it inside and you, it's doing, it's living its life, and its life expectancy's ten years. In the park, the oldest rabbit we've ever found is only three years old. So that life expectancy is significantly shorter, and their survival rate as babies are significantly shorter, but we're just have so many coming to the park, it's keeping that constant supply of them. So that's why we're trying to stop that and stop it being known as a place to dump animals.
Okay, fair enough.
There's a prominent news article in Florida, I don't know if you saw it, but the entire city overrun by rabbits, it's become a public health issue, it can become out of control very quickly.
And they're asking for forty thousand dollars to fix their rabbits in this park. It just became national news. So we're trying to prevent that from happening in your city, for the rabbits and for you guys.
Just get a pit bull.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Are we ready for the next item? Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. Appreciate it. The next item is going back to public hearing, item number six. The subject is Landscape Maintenance Assessment District Ninety-seven oh one, levy of assessments. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution to confirm the diagram and assessment and to levy fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four assessments for Landscape Maintenance Assessment District Ninety-seven oh one.
Good evening, Mayor. Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. Regina Cave, General Services Director. Uh, this first of three public hearing items that we have this evening, all are under me. Um, but this first one is pertaining to Landscape Assessment District Ninety-seven oh one. This is the second and final step so that we may proceed with assessing the respective zones for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. We have four zones within Ninety-seven oh one. Uh, Council approved last month to go ahead and set the public hearing for this evening. Subsequently, a notice was posted, so this evening, uh, the request is for Council to open the public hearing and receive any comments, close the public hearing, and then approve the, um, proposed levies for twenty-three, twenty-four. And I'm available for any questions.
Any questions from Council?
We could do it after the public hearing.
Okay, all right.
I mean, after the public...
All right, so I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Anybody wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Now, do we have any, uh, any, uh, questions or concerns with Council? Dr. Gina Karpinski-Costa?
At the last council meeting, I asked staff to prepare, you know, just to look into how much we subsidized Zone Four, Creek Ridge. Zone, Zone One and Two pay for themselves, eighty-two and eighty parcels in Zone One, eighty-two in Zone Two. They pay a hundred and thirty-one and a hundred and twenty-two dollars. Zone Three is pretty much, there's a, there's a shortage a little bit, but it's, it's, they pay forty-two dollars and fifty cents, and they're a little bit short, but Zone Four pays forty-two dollars and fifty cents, has refused to raise their assessment three times, and we have subsidized them to about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars over the years. This year alone, it's fifteen thousand dollars that comes out of our Mejuree money, Mejuree or?
Gas tax.
Gas tax. Now, that gas tax would go somewhere else if it wasn't going there, and I'm thinking roads, because we all want roads. And, you know, every little bit helps, even if it's only fifteen thousand this year, fifteen thousand next year, and cumulatively, it may be significant. So what I would like to see, even though I know I'm going to support passing that for this year, um, I would like to see us look for ways to, I know that in the past, we have decreased, tried to go zero escaping to decrease the water needs, but I would like to see us find a way to combat that, that burden on the rest of the, I mean, nobody comes and waters my front lawn and makes my front beautiful, but, uh, it seems that the rest of taxpayers are paying for a hundred and eleven parcels' share of this beautification of their front lawn. So I'd just like to see a way that we could attack it more, whether we redesign it to be a beautiful rock formation, or, I mean, there are some beautiful rock formations, the church down in Rancha, Cordova, there's a beautiful, a little waterfall on it, but that's cute. But, you know, it's just that when you look at all of the zones and all, all of them, I mean, there are over a thousand people, parcels that are paying their share. Some of them are quite high, geez, seven hundred and fifty-three dollars for one assessment district, and it's just that this one's the smallest amount, and it's just they, they, they come and scream that they don't want us to decrease the service, but they're not willing to pay. I mean, if I go to buy a car and I have this much money, I can't buy a car like this, I can only buy a car like that, and that's why my car's little. So, um, I would like to see us at least by next year, when this comes up again, to have some way that we can, over the, over this next period of time, uh, reduce that amount, that burden on the rest of the city. And I'd like to have my council members support that.
One thing I just want to sort of reiterate is, that's seven hundred and fifty-three dollars per parcel.
I know, and this one...
That is...
But Creek Ridge is only forty-two dollars.
Right. So, uh, I, I guess my point is, is people kind of brush over the seven hundred and fifty-three dollars without realizing that that really is per parcel. That is a very expensive assessment. Um, and again, it's, uh, we're, we're facing a subsidy that we're taking money away from roads to pay for lighting and landscaping. So, um, that's really something to, to really carefully consider, uh, how we move forward on this. They, again, they have had an opportunity to increase this upon themselves to maintain that, but they refuse to do so.
Correct. And one of the biggest challenges, if I may, for this specific zone is that this is a heavily, um, renter occupied, uh, neighborhood traditionally since pre-incorporation, and when we had made efforts, uh, the three times before to solicit, um, the votes, we did receive a very low count, and of course, those votes were, um, mostly not in favor of increasing.
Do they need to go on a ballot, or do you just send a, a, a written ballot?
So it's part of the two eighteen requirements, and so, um, they would need to, the property owners who are affected, those are the ones that vote, and they are the ones that need to propose to increase.
Does it have to go on a, on a ballot, like, like the regular?
We mail them. We mail them. It's a ballot that we mail. And then we have to receive, I believe it's, a majority of the ballots received back must be in favor of increasing. So if we send out a hundred and we only get ten back.
You don't send it to the renters, though, do you send it?
It's the property owners, property owners only. But many of the times, if they are rental homes, the property owners usually aren't living in the vicinity, or they are absentee owners.
But there's really no incentive for them to respond.
Clarifying question for you, Regina. Is there an option not to provide the service?
That would be at the direction of the council. But I would caution that in effort of our beautification campaign, our CARES campaign, of trying to increase and improve the aesthetics of the community, anything that we would do to decrease the services to those areas that face the public right of way could have adverse impacts on our efforts of improving the beautification of the city.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Vice Mayor Daniels.
So the, the desire is to use gas tax funds to, to close the gap?
The desire is to use whatever funds that we have available to be able to close the gap. Historically, we've been using gas taxes. We transitioned from general fund probably about six years ago.
To, to do this area specifically?
We've done for this, for this area for two zones, for Zones Three and Zones Four.
Well, I, I mean, I think that's pretty ridiculous when we're, we're taking money that people go and put gas in their car. And they're paying a tax at that time to put gas in their car that because this area doesn't want to increase the money that, to take care of that area where they are, that we're going to take the money that I put in my car for gas and spend it for plants over in front of these houses. It's just, I find that just ludicrous, just ludicrous, that we would do such a thing. I, I don't even understand why we would do such a thing, other than, you know, the money, if it doesn't come from here, it maybe comes from another source within the city, and I understand that. I just don't see how it's fair to anybody to have to take money that they paid at the gas pump when they pay that money for the purpose of pretty much roads.
So gas tax, if I may, can be used for other ancillary items within the transportation system. And we do historically, and still today, utilize gas tax funds to pay for a lot of our landscaping. We have a landscape contractor that covers a lot of the city. In addition to the twelve zones that we manage, the Landscape Assessment Districts, we have general landscape areas. For instance, Area Five, the park over there, we utilize gas tax money. We spend about twenty thousand dollars a month just on basic maintenance of our landscape system utilizing gas tax funds. So this is not out of the norm to use it. However, in this case, like I said, we used to use general fund years ago as part of these two zones. And then subsequently, we transitioned and started utilizing gas tax funds to be able to save some of the general fund dollars.
Can I make a suggestion that we, before we accept a motion on this? I realize that the city attorney might want to perk up and pay attention here, because what I'm going to suggest is that we send all these property owners a bill, a separate bill, and see how many of them pay. See how many of them pay the bill. And see if.
Instead of voting, instead of voting for an increase?
Instead of voting for it, let's send them a bill, say, hey, this is what our obligation, this is what your obligation is, even though it may not be a legal obligation, meaning it might not be enforceable or collectible. But it's a statement that says, this is how much the city is having to pay for your property. So I don't know, what, what, what's the council's thoughts on that idea?
I'd rather see them vote for it.
Well, they're not going to do it.
All the other groups that have been asked to increase, you know, when we started out, some of the Zone One, and I wrote it down, and they all said yes. You know, even one said yes to the increase and doubled their fee, but then no to the COLA, one group. And so, but still, the COLA, they're still covered. That's the one that, Group Three, that's Zone Three, didn't want the COLA. But geez, you know, most of them vote when there's a need to increase it, because the costs of maintenance have changed since nineteen ninety-nine, since we became a city. I mean, twenty-five years ago, you could get, you know, I was telling Ash, I went to Rayleigh's, and one artichoke was five dollars. One artichoke. So the cost of stuff has gone up.
Well, I don't know, if we just continue, we adopt this, and we don't do any, we don't try anything new, we're never going to get anywhere.
Well, I think we should try to get them to pay, but not send a bill, just to see if they'll, what's your ideas, Regina?
How do we ask for that unless we send them a bill?
So what we can do, if council may go ahead and still approve to levy these, because it's either a yes or a no. If we don't levy, we miss out on those funds, and we're still obligated to continue servicing that area. So we go ahead and levy for this next year, and we can send communications out to, if Ryan concurs, to that entire zone or both Zones, Zones Three and Zones Four, and advise them, look, in recent years, as costs continue to increase, to service your respective zones, these costs per parcel will need to increase. We are requesting that you take into consideration increasing your assessment and proceed with the voting process.
And tell them if not, what the, what the alternative is. Say goodbye to your green space.
The alternative may be to remove some of your landscape. Now, in that case, then the council would also have to make the decision on investing additional dollars to remove some of that landscape and put, make it a minimal landscape zone, something similar to what we did to Oak Avenue years ago. But those costs continue to increase, even just maintaining the basic landscape that's out there.
So this is city-owned property?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so I, I concur that we can, we can certainly make the request. I think we'll just have to include language that says this is not a mandate. We don't want them to think that this is a mandatory fee. It's, we'll phrase it in a way where we're encouraging it, but I, I can't, we can't use the term mandate.
Okay.
Well, you got a year to figure out the language. So if by next year, maybe we'll have, be a surprise, and they'll say, okay, we'll raise it.
Can I have a motion?
I'll motion that we go forward with the, whatever, go forward with the, the next stage. This is the, adopt a resolution to confirm the diagram and assessment and levy the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four assessments for Landscape Lighting Maintenance District ninety-seven dash oh one, Zones One, Two, Three, and Four.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Costa, second by Taff. Do we need to do a roll call vote, or are we going to do it all at once? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Seeing none? Motion passes. Next item, please.
Next item is public hearing, item number seven. The subject is Landscape Maintenance Assessment Districts ninety-eight oh one, ninety-eight oh two, and oh-three oh one, levy of fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four assessments. And the council has before them three resolutions for each of the districts to confirm the diagram and assessment and to levy fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four assessments.
Can we do them all together, or we have to open the public hearing? But can we do them all at once, or do we have to do them separately?
We do have to do them separately. They're, they're separate resolutions, but you could do them one after the other, at the end of the presentation.
Any questions or comments from council members on this? Okay, seeing none, I will open the public hearing. Anybody like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Are there any additional comments from council members? Seeing none, can I have a motion, please?
I move that we adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights, California to confirm the diagram and assessment and to levy fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four assessments for Landscape Maintenance Assessment Districts number ninety-eight dash oh one, Stock Village Units numbers one and two.
Thank you. Councilmember Middleton, may I have a second?
Second.
Second by Costa. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Seeing none? Nope. Did you vote for it?
I voted aye.
Okay. Seeing none, motion passes. All right. And we have the next motion. On the second one is, can I have a motion on the second item, please?
I move to adopt the resolution of the City of the, of the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights to confirm the diagram and assessment and to levy fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four assessments for Landscape Maintenance Assessment District number ninety-eight dash oh two, Zone One, Sorensen Ranch. Zone Two, Autumn Wood. Zone Three, Mariposa Creek. And Zone Four, Wyatt Ranch.
Have a second?
Second.
Middleton, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. Next resolution, please. Can I have a motion on the next resolution?
I move that we adopt a resolution for the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights to confirm the diagram and assessment and to levy fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four assessments for Landscape Maintenance Assessment Districts number three dash zero one, Stock Ranch Zones One, Stock Ranch North Zone Two, Stock Ranch South, and Zone Three, Mitchell Farms.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Can I have a second by Taff? I thank you, Dr. Jana, for offering that up. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. Next item, please.
Next item is public hearing, item number eight. The subject is Citrus Heights Lighting Assessment District, levy of fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four assessments. And the recommendation is to adopt a resolution to confirm the diagram and assessment and to levy fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four assessments for the Citrus Heights Lighting Assessment District.
Question by the council?
I have a question, but I have a comment. Once again, we're in the hole in this. We haven't raised the, I live on the two dollar and fifty cent street, you know, that I don't have to pay that much, because I don't have any lights, probably similar to the lady who doesn't have any lights. So, and, and once again, we're, this is one, we're using our measure A money for this. And so it's, it's a tax that is being spent for lighting. I think the lights in the city are horrible. I mean, we, we need more lighting in the city. There's no doubt about it. So I, I'm, I'm in favor of voting for this proposal, but I'd like to look at ways that, I'm just, my, my thought was, when I read the, the staff report, was, I know the sewer is going to raise the rate. They haven't raised the rate in seven years, but it's only going to be like a dollar. So, and that seems a dollar for that many people that are in the service area is significant enough, because, so my question was, how many parcels do we have in the two dollar and fifty cent zone and in the seventeen dollar zone? And if we were to ask people to increase their rate so that we would not be spending measure A, if we were to, ask them to come up for, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking, I could, you could double my two dollars and fifty cents to five dollars a year. This is not five dollars a month. This is not a tax every time I make a purchase. This is just a little one-time, two dollar and fifty cent raise. If it means that it would make our, our city whole on the debt that we currently have, and if it would create a pot of money that we could install some lights into the neighborhoods that need lights. Because I think overall, we need to light up the neighborhood by way of crime, by way of, you know, just quality of life. So I don't know, just how much would we have to ask people to pitch in, to come up with some number, and, and don't be greedy. You know, don't be greedy. Don't try to get the whole city carpeted with lights. Just some amount that we could predict, that we could meet out over the years and do something with it. And not be draining our measure A money to pay for lights.
So as you.
Mud goes up. My smud bill is almost four times what it was when I moved to Citrus Heights.
Which is a challenge, is the cost of doing business with our maintenance of our contractors, and the electricity continues to go up. Currently, as you can see, we have a deficit of about a hundred thousand dollars a year. That means we bring in a hundred thousand dollars less with our assessments than what it costs just to do the basic maintenance. This does not allow us to not only cover our costs, but also to build up reserves to install new streetlights. New streetlights, and this is assuming there is a service can nearby, so that provides electricity within two hundred feet. It's almost seventeen thousand dollars for one light. That's pulling your conduit and erecting a light. On top of that, you have your annual maintenance costs. So in order to have, cover your annual maintenance costs and to build up a reserve, you're talking three hundred and fifty-eight dollars per parcel that would have to pay.
Are you kidding?
Mm-mm. For effective, for the effective.
And this would put in how many lights?
Now, this takes into consideration, most of our lights, and I don't know the numbers, pardon me, our city engineer would be able to provide that for you, but I don't know what the number is between how many safety lights we have, which are the two dollars and fifty-six cent lights. Those are the ones that are only at the signalized intersections. And then the rest of the lights in the community are safe, are, are streetlights. So those are the ones on your properties. And not all of those are covered by an assessment. They're in the assessment district, but not everybody pays for those. So for instance, if your, a streetlight is within eighty feet of your property, and it covers fifty percent or more, you pay that assessment, that fifteen dollars and change. Lights that are, for instance, on Greenback Lane, that are behind properties and are not on a property to assess, nobody pays for that. So the assessment district has to absorb that. And that's where you have that hundred thousand dollar delta. It's because nobody else is helping to pay for that. So you have a lot of lights that don't get directly paid for. People aren't being assessed for those. And you have the cost of doing business continues to go up for maintenance services and for electricity. You have older infrastructure. We haven't been able to replace a lot of our streetlights. The only times we replace them or repair them are when they're damaged by accidents. And our ratio of when we can actually recover for those accidents is actually pretty low. So in the event where one is damaged by a hit and run or uninsured, that's a loss that we're having to absorb.
Well, now that we have this fancy grant writing outfit working for us, maybe there's a grant out there that, you know, this is a safety issue.
We continue to look for those, but in many instances, even on our capital projects that are federally funded, we do not receive funding to pay for those. We're having to pay for a lot of those. It just depends on the color of money, but there really is no direct grant out there to pay for safety lights or streetlights.
Yes?
I think Jana touched on some really good points there. You know, the number one job of government is public safety. And there's no argument against the fact that lighting helps make areas safer. And I, I just find it remarkable that there's this system within our city, you know, twenty-five years into being a city, that has this kind of, maybe chaotic's not the right word, but just this fragmented, different approach to, to various parts of, of the city regarding lighting. I, I don't understand why we haven't moved forward with lighting everywhere. You know, there's a cost to it, yeah, but that's why people pay taxes. You pay taxes so that they'll be, government will spend them, and hopefully, they'll spend them on the right way. And the number one thing, again, is public safety. So I, I don't know why we haven't moved forward with that. I wish we would. I don't understand why Jana would pay anything different than I would pay any different, that Tim would pay anything different on, on, on a streetlight. We're all being protected by the streetlight.
I have no lights, that's why. She has no lights.
No, I'm saying, we should have lights. I'm saying there should be lights installed. And everybody in the city, every property, should be assessed the same amount for the light. I, I don't understand how that could be different, why even that would be different. And, you know, I know there's some convoluted rules in, in, in making assessments and stuff like that. And there will be people that, you know, no, I'm not paying a dollar more for a light, you know, and hopefully, they would be defeated at the, at the ballot box. But I don't know why we're not moving forward with our number one priority, and that's public safety, and that includes lighting. This is not a new thing. This is, this is an annual, you know, conversation in the City Council. It's been going on forever of, why, why don't we have street lighting everywhere? It, it just baffles me. And so I, I wish we could find some energy to move in that direction and not have to have this conversation, literally, it seems like every year.
There's a balance to that argument, though, because there's lots of people out there that are not in favor of having more and more and more streetlights. They, we have a guy that comes here and complains about light pollution and.
Oh, it used to be bigger.
I know, I know. I'm aware. I have a lamppost at my house, okay? It's not that expensive to put a lamppost in. My house is also built in nineteen fifty-eight. So I, I think that, that.
Is it on your property, or is it a?
It's on my property.
Oh, okay.
So certainly, my concern is, if we move forward with this, and again, we're now going after, in order to implement this sort of thing, in order to fund this, we would need to do some kind of tax measure for this purpose. And, and I just don't know how many people would really vote to fund this. Because clearly, when you start looking at every single street in the city of Citrus Heights, and all of them, and I would say the majority of them do not have streetlights. So we're talking millions and millions of potentially dollars here. So, and to, to convince people that, hey, you know, I think you're going to hear a lot of people say, hey, I already pay enough taxes. I'm not paying a nickel more for, for streetlights. It really does, there, there needs to be some kind of balanced approach to this that says, all right, well, you know, again, I think it would be really cool if everybody put lampposts in. Can you imagine your street going, looking down your street? All the lampposts look the same. They look beautiful. It really would look really unique in our city. And we'd really set us, set our city apart from that. But that's a whole nother discussion. But nonetheless, any other comments from council members? Okay. So may I have a motion, please? Or, I need to open the public hearing?
Correct.
Okay, I'm going to open a public hearing on this item, item eight. Anybody will choose to come up and speak on this item? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Any other comments from council members? If there's none, may I have a motion, please?
I move we adopt resolution of the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights, California to confirm the diagram and assessment and to levy fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four assessments for the Citrus Heights Lighting Assessment District.
Motion by Costa. Second by Middleton. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. Next item, please.
Next item is regular calendar, item number nine. The subject is Approval of Fiscal Year Twenty-three, Twenty-four Greater Sacramento Economic Council Annual Agreement. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving Greater Sacramento Economic Council Annual Agreement.
Good evening, Mayor Schaefer, and members of City Council. I'm Megan Huber, Economic Development and Community Engagement Director. This is an annual item that council has considered since twenty fifteen, the inception of our partnership with Greater Sacramento Economic Council and their inception as an organization as well. We renew the membership using our Economic Development Support Fund, an economic development grant program designed specifically. an economic development grant program designed specifically to support economic development activities. And we also have a best practice, when we present this annually, to invite Greater Sacramento Economic Council here so they can share progress in regional economic development strategy and the value it provides to the city of Citrus Heights. So with that, I'd like to bring up a guest and introduce President and CEO Barry Broome of Greater Sacramento Economic Council, who has some slides to share.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Ash, thank you. I told Megan, you know, basically, having made presentations my whole life, one of the toughest things is to follow the rabbit report. You know, you just can't. It was so compelling, wasn't it? It was kind of interesting. I love how people think through all these things, you know? So I told her, I said, you never want to follow someone who's better than you at a presentation. So I thought the rabbit report was really interesting.
Keeps you hopping.
Yeah, exactly. So, um, well, thank you. So, um, so we, uh, I'll, I'll take you through a, a presentation. It's a little bit longer than it probably should have been. But, um, I want, you know, I'm kind of experimenting with these. So thank you, Mayor and council for some experimentation. So this is who we are, right? So basically, you know, it, you know, let's just, you know, talk about sunrise, right? So we're building a trade area to reactivate sunrise, right? So if you're sunrise, your trade area is a region. And if you're the airport, or if you're the universities or any other critical assets, you're really working on a regional footprint. And these assets rise and fall based upon regional performance. And then local communities all build their own local economic objectives underneath that larger regional model so you can capture and strengthen your own platform and position, right? So if you hear about something, it's a regional asset and the goal of the regional asset is set the tone for Citrus Heights and other communities to build the local economic model in concert with that. And then we bring the top line economic support to the market. And then a set of services that a community can't perform to do necessarily on its own. And so it's a cooperative pooling model. Obviously, 85% of our funding comes from the CEOs. So we also give our CEOs something to do. So, uh, you know, it's interesting. I never know what good news is anymore because you never know how people respond to things, right? But, you know, this is historically would be considered really good news that we would be the local choice of the Bay Area. You know, that changes our age of our workforce. It changes our competitive position. It increases income. But we know some of our residents are questioning whether or not their housing impacts are being created by this. But we're actually not really, you know, we got 40,000 people during COVID, but we're basically down to what we've been getting statistically for 10 or 12 years. So we don't really have a unique infusion of Bay Area residents beyond, um, the 40,000 that came during COVID. That was about twice of what we normally had. So it's, uh, really important from a market position standpoint. I mean, basically what we're, one of the reasons we're being so successful is, uh, you know, we've become a well-run market inside the fourth largest economy in the world. The other markets aren't so well-run. San Francisco and Los Angeles has really lost their allure. We've been a beneficiary of that. And like all things, we'll have some negative impacts from that too, because those two big markets pay for most of the bills in the state capital. So, you know, a lot of us, you know, people think about us as, well, they recruit major employers because you hear Bosch. So Solidigm's hired 1,000 engineers at Rancho. Bosch is $2.5 billion. So those are the kind of things that get in the newspaper. But really, it's about investment in jobs. You know, how does this region build a more sustainable and investment job platform? How's that investment job platform going to scale into the future? How is it independent of government? Because our government dependency has been very dangerous. If you look at downtown Sacramento, 73,000 government jobs gone at the snap of the finger. They're now remote jobs. Well, what happens when those remote jobs turn? A kid in Woodland Hills or Fresno may be working in those remote jobs and go, gee, I don't have to move to the state capital. So sustainability in relationship with that government is really our number one objective. Our number two objective is how do we become a player in the future economy? You know, one of the things that happens is second tiered markets, which is like a Portland and a Sacramento, a Salt Lake. We tend to follow the larger markets. And, um, that means it's a cost competition when we participate. And our friends in the state capital make it very hard for us to win a cost competition. So these are some of the major investments, um, that we've been involved in. Sometimes they were 10, 20, 30 companies when we started. Uh, they're now doing IPOs. So, you know, really our new venture creation model, which, you know, we've launched an initiative called the Growth Factory headed by Mark Aney. Uh, we're very talented at business formation. I mean, we're actually a very exceptional market. So that's an important part of our work, even though that's not a Bosch or a Solidigm or a Centene. Um, our footprint of global companies have changed dramatically. Solidigm is at 1,000 jobs. Another 1,000 be 1950. Solidigm's headquarters has now relocated to Rancho Cordova. And the CEO from Crete has moved here. So, you know, you can never tell, right? So he's actually even committed to coming on our board. So that is extraordinary. And, and Solidigm will do, and, uh, go public in three years. So we will have a Fortune 500 headquarters in our region, in Sacramento County. It'll be the first one in our history when it goes public. And then of course Bosch isn't on there yet, but these larger companies bring in supply chains. Uh, you know this, Mayor, because you're a professional in the field. They do things that give us a lot of lift. So we try to pay attention to industry, not big or small, industry. And if it's a small company, it'll become a big company. If it's a large company, you know, support the small companies by being a, a supply chain service provider to it. Uh, this is our current pipeline, which, you know, we're now, um, almost 35% of the end market activity of California. That's amazing. So we're about 5% of California. We're about 35% of California's business pipeline. Which when you consider how big those other markets are, is again, Mayor, as you know, great for us, dabbing my forehead when the UCs and the Cal State schools want their bills paid, right? So we gotta fix the economy throughout the state. And of course, um, you know, the nice thing about these, these jobs is these are higher paying jobs. So we've been averaging about 100 last year, 140,000 this year, about 100,000. Rent's 72,500 for, uh, early stage purchase home buyer, about $129,000. So we work with employers. Not only do they fit culturally, they're part of the future. But will our residents be able to rent when they work, right? That's one of the problems with a government-based economy. Then you get a service economy. And we don't produce enough income for people to live here any longer. And it creates a lot of sustainability problems. So we're thinking in terms of how's our sustainability within relationship to our traditional government dependency? I'm sure you remember in 2008, how hard that hit because of us? And then, you know, where's it going into the future? How do we bring incomes that are, that create living wages to our residents? And then, you know, pay attention to equity and inclusion, which is a real data point that we're kind of proud of. And so we don't know how to put slides together. I've noticed that's, you know, it's like, we're going to go to a slide course, but no one can understand what this is. So I'll just explain it to you because it looks like spaghetti. But basically, when we launched the organization in 2015, you know, what's the rationale for working on the economy in California? We, you know, our statewide policymakers are very comfortable with the economic threats in Westland by the graveyard. We took enough of a blow in 15. I mean, we had the, we were the last region in the United States to recover from the housing crisis. So that's what led to this organization being funded. CEOs were angry about the lack of performance. And it was a partnership between six CEOs and Kevin Johnson. And I, uh, was helping out and ended up being afforded the opportunity to be here and certainly appreciate the support. But the beauty of this, that top line lumber is inclusion. So we're about the 22nd, well, 27th U.S. market. We're top five in the United States in inclusion now. If you look in 2017, we were 80. 2018, we were 84. So that's a huge needle mover, but a lot of that has to do with the fact you're hearing diversity, inclusion, diversity, inclusion. It's in workforce. It's in the manufacturing count. It's in all these things. So if you work at something and talk about it, you actually can't move the needle. And some of the things, um, that, that are also moving that needle is, you know, if you go back 10 years, when did you see UC Davis in economic development? When did you see Sacramento State in economic development? Now, both those institutions are heavily gazed in economic development. And when your universities move in the right direction and your community, uh, you know, aligns around objectives, you can move the needle. We're 22, um, in, uh, growth, which is, you know, we're about 27, 28. So we're punching above growth. I mean, we were 71 before in the U.S. And now we're 28th in prosperity. And that's about our indicator. But, you know, we'd like to bring, we'd like to bring all the indicators into a top 20. We'd like to punch a little bit above our weight. Then that way, if we continue to have more governmental correction in the future, right? We need to absorb, we'll absorb those folks. You know, if you got a flat, slow-moving economy, you get a big government corruption, you can't absorb them, right? Because you don't have an economic model on the other side to participate, for them to participate in. This also will change, this is also changing the data on what our higher education kids are doing. So now UC Davis, that data point, 2017, we were getting 10% of UC Davis graduates. So here you have one of the 10 most impressive universities maybe in America, one of the most compelling, and you're not keeping any of the kids because they were taken off for Bay Area, Silicon Valley, LA and leaving the country or leaving the state. Now about 40% of those kids stay here. It wasn't only 10%. So we do a lot of economic modeling. So we know, like, if we hit the models right, the outcomes are good for the community. If you're keeping your college students, you're deploying them in future economies, you're producing living wages, you're moving away from government, you're paying attention to equity, inclusion, you're going to build a much more stable economy. And then the larger model grows. So you create demand for Sunrise Mall, like the airport gets stronger. And then all these other critical assets are lifted by the regional performance. So, um, skilled workers, right, um, are, are really the catalyst for changing poverty. You know, a lot of people don't know that, but a skilled worker creates a catalyst for other highly skilled workers. So we focus on these hard skilled employers and work on building up skills. You know, it automatically starts to elevate throughout the region. So I won't, I'll, I'll take you through this relatively quickly because it was a little bit longer than it should be. But just, just the things that were launched post, you know, 2015. Obviously, um, nine of our CEOs are Sac State grads. So the Carlson Center, which is a really successful entrepreneurship program. And one of our board members, Dale Carlson, put 6 million into it. Project Attain is the goal, to get the graduation rate to 50% and to retain our kids. So Project Attain is modeled after how does this region hit educational standards on par with Portland, Seattle, Denver, and these other competitive markets? Because what these employers do is, you know, they just take snapshots of you. You know, just think if you're buying a house, right? You want a four-bedroom house, you want a pool in the backyard, and you have some other characteristics. Someone says, hey, I got a really cool three-bedroom house I want to show you. You turn to the broker and say, no, 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 I have, I have, I have three kids. So I need, you know. So employers are like that too, you know, they, they establish a hurdle or an expectation. And then your community has to meet all those expectations, do analytics for them to come in and invest in you. And if you don't meet them, they don't come. It's just like, you know, I didn't say I wanted a three-bedroom. I want a four-bedroom. So how do you get the educational attainment level over 40%? Uh, Project Attain's objective is 60,000 more graduates through Sac State. And some of that is going into the alumni network and bringing them back through. If we can hit Project Attain's goals, we go over 40%. And that puts us in the conversation with all the other up and coming economies in the U.S. So then the Mobility Center, which, Mayor, you know that, that's, uh, you know, probably the new Major League Soccer bid. It'll be around for the rest of my life, but, you know, hopefully we'll get that built. So we're making a lot of progress with our universities. And every time you strengthen universities, 75% of our kids at UC Davis and Sac State come from underserved backgrounds and diverse backgrounds. So building up those universities and then capturing those kids and building an economy around those kids is another reason why those DEI numbers are moving. Uh, we talked about new enterprise formation. Look at all the accelerators you have in your community. When I came here in 2015, you didn't have one. And now we've had a 700% increase in venture capital in this region. So in 2015, we had $15 million under management. In 2025, we will have a billion dollars under management. And that's early stage. And the reason that's important is the more mature venture funds in the Bay Area, the one advantage we have being near the Bay Area, those larger funds will put money in here. So Ezra Games, um, you know, received $20 million from Andreessen Horowitz right out of Palo Alto. So when have you heard of a Sacramento startup getting 20 million from the most well-respected venture fund in Silicon Valley? So, you know, those are the kind of qualifiers that really have us excited. We're super pumped about the Growth Factory. I think it's going to be one of the best accelerators in the country. It's on its way. Equity, you know, we spend a lot, so I'm on the Urban League Board. So what we do a lot of times, I serve on the Urban League Board. So, you know, we may do the hard design on things. So this is the digital upskilling program. It actually, uh, was recognized internationally. And this is, some of this is a kind of prototyping work. So we went into the poorest neighborhoods in, in the Sacramento urban core. And we, uh, opened up an open bid for a Google IT certification. We had 5,000 applicants, 500 qualified. We only had the money for 40. We had a 93% completion rate and 100% placement rate at $57,000. And that was two or three years ago. So if you give people a great opportunity, give them a chance to change their life, they'll take you up on it. But what happens in a lot of these workforce programs, we don't do that. So, um, this is kind of the top line indicator. So this was a presentation I made at a retreat with our CEOs. 2005, this is, this is such an interesting turnaround. You know, in, in 1994, uh, Greater Sacramento's economy was more dynamic than Austin, Seattle, Portland, Denver, and Phoenix. And in 2015, it was dramatically behind them. And now if you look in, through, through 2015 to 2023, you know, you're seeing, you know, a big shift in the advancement of our tradable sectors. And if you know anything about how, uh, data works, you know, we're coming from the bottom. We had, we were contracting in our industry for a decade. And that's why when you got clobbered with the housing, you couldn't come out of it because there wasn't any bounce in the economic step. And now what's going on is the balance is occurring in the economics, uh, step. And that is built, you know, around industries, innovation, universities, and then the larger economic objective. So, um, all of our, all of our GSEC communities get a significant return, you know? You know, economic impacts have huge financial returns. I'm working on a project. I'll, I'll give an example, just talking about Bosch as an example. So you can imagine what Roseville Electric looks like as a public utility standing out there by themselves, right? You know, uh, getting fed California's regulatory oversight. I mean, they were thinly capitalized. A lot of people in Roseville were worried about sustaining it. Bosch is going to sustain Roseville Electric for 30 years. So now public power is going to be guaranteed in Roseville for 30 years because of Bosch. And so we pay a lot of attention, how do people get returns? And of course, you know, Citrus Heights residents work all over the region. And so basically, the goal of the organization is how do we give you a return? How do we produce services and support for you? You can't produce on your own. And then obviously, you're pooling your resources with other communities. So, you know, just our analytics is, you know, probably 600 or 700,000 dollars a year. So obviously, you know, if, if Megan and Ash are working with the developers on Sunrise, we can crank out all the numbers, the data. If employers are asking questions, we can do that. And the ability to have access to that's critical, especially on big investments. So this is a, you know, um, you know, we'll know in six months, um, we're making a lot of prior. So the Mobility Center is a large high-tech engineering asset. You know, we're, Doris Matsui's on our board now. Luke Wood, the new president's already on our executive committee. The presidency of Solidigm's coming on our board. So how do we make sure, you know, we always end up getting beat out of these big public dollar rolls, right? How do we make sure we get some of these CHIPS act? I mean, Bosch is going to get that. Solidigm's going to get that. How does Intel get that? You know, how are we going to be, you know, we're going to transform the entire mobility industry by regulating out diesel and regulating out gas. Are we going to get into those jobs or are we just going to watch them go to Texas, right? So how do we, how do we build the capacity to participate in that? And really, um, if we add an additional 28,000 jobs, you know, uh, in the next 10 years from our current growth trajectory, you know, we really start bringing our government dependency down. But what we need to do over the next 15 to 20 years is to create 128,000 industry jobs, independent of the government, for us to have a normal relationship with the government. So we'll be more like an Indianapolis or a Columbus or a Austin, right? We won't be a government town. We'll be proud to be the state capital of California. This is one of my sayings too, let's not leave California, let's lead it. And, uh, you know, I guess it was a little short and I thought it looked longer on the pitch, but, um, that's it. So how do we get these CEOs to care about us? Because as soon as they put their hands in their pockets, we're done for. You know, the, you know, all of us on the ground will be fighting for our community. That's what we do with our lives. But these CEOs, we need them to care. So being able to get like the CEO of Ampax just come on our board, you know, and getting those people on our board to hear what's going on and listen to us and care is really important. How do you get the communities to operate as a single unit so we all share in our economic strength and power? And then obviously, how do we deliver, you know, a great product and set of service to our communities that they can't produce on their own? And that's been our goal. And, oh, and we were named the number three organization by the International Economic Development Council. So, um, uh, that's a, a really high standing. So I always tell Gary May, who told me he's the fourth rated public university in the United States, I'm like, nice try. We're number three. So, um, and, and then of course, the other goal too is to produce other young leaders. And then, as part of our economic development practice, you know, if you're Ash, or if, if you're Megan, or if you're another community, you get to plug in once a month for two hours and get all the data and evidence of what's going on in the marketplace. So it's, it's been a, a, you know, obviously, we always wish we could do more. You always feel like you're full and short, but it's been a pretty successful organization, and that's because of your support and other people stepping up. So I want to thank you very much for your support for the organization, and I look forward to working with you in the future.
Great. Thank you, Barry. Questions from council members? So I'm going to draw some emphasis to what you've just been talking about. Um, so I'm very excited about Bosch. Bosch, for those who don't know, is a, a major silicon chip manufacturer. Um, and they made a $1.5 billion investment in Roseville. Solid Dime is, uh, they bought a part of, uh, Intel's product line and moved their engineers to Rancho Cordova. I mean, so Bosch purchased TSI Semiconductor, who's been in Roseville for 40 years. Their technology is quite old and dated, and they need a shot in the arm. And that's where Bosch's headquarters is going to be. One of what this means at Citrus Heights is jobs. This means that the people that I work with, many of them come from our community. They come from Citrus Heights. So, uh, in 2018, uh, we did, we wanted to start an apprenticeship program, and so we did advertising everywhere we could possibly think about it, think about, and we were getting nothing, no traction whatsoever. I wrote an article in the Citrus Heights Sentinel, and we got 13 responses within a day. And all 13 of those people engaged in the apprenticeship program, and all 13 of those people are still in the industry. So what this means to us, this means that it's places where people are going to work, people can develop some affluence in our community. And, um, and that is, that's really, really important, and I thank very much the GSEC folks for bringing these opportunities for us, for our, for our people. We don't have the space to house some of these buildings, but we can certainly provide them with some, uh, some workforce. Um, and so I'm very excited about that. So, um, and Solid Dime is another one. They, they moved from San Jose. They were down on North First Street in San Jose, and they chose to locate into the vacant, um, Verizon, um, facility down in Rancho Cordova. So, uh, this is nothing but, there's another company in Rancho Cordova, I was telling Ash about this morning, $64 million investment in their facility. There, uh, they have several facilities down in the Bay Area. They're expanding up here because they're seeing what they like, they like to see up here. So very exciting stuff, and ultimately, this comes to, if we can, you know, a rising tide raises all ships. So when we can apply, provide a skilled workforce, that means that skilled workforce becomes more affluent and, and makes our community thrive without raising taxes.
Thank you, Mayor.
So, anyhow, with that.
Did we videotape that?
Yes.
That was really well done, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Do, uh, so, uh, so that, uh, is there any public comment on this? No?
I have not received any.
Okay, great.
I would move that we adopt a resolution to the City Council approving the Greater Sacramento Economic Council annual agreement.
Okay. The Vice Mayor's tired of hearing me talk, so.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Daniels, a second by Middleton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Seeing none, motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Thank you for the support. Really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
The next item, we're jumping to city manager items.
Good evening, Mayor Schaefer, Vice Mayor Daniels, members of City Council. Anyone here about City Scoop? Yeah, I, I understand it was a fantastic event. Uh, we have some pictures here representing it. It was fan, great to see the community turnout and the numbers they did. I understand 200 or more people attended our first City Scoop event. A lot of great efforts by our, uh, community engagement team on that, as well as our general services department, who helped, uh, deliver so much of the infrastructure that it takes to, uh, put an event on like this. And we had, I think, uh, most, if not all, of our departments were represented there as well. And also wanted to thank our sponsor, Leatherbee's Ice Cream, who went ahead and provided ice cream for the event. Fantastic to have a, uh, local business engage with the community in the way that they did. So some fun pictures here, as you can see, and I think we've got a couple of slides here that, that show that. Some good, some good times here. I know all members of the Council were there, uh, and really appreciate your support for this event, and it's not our last one. I see if we've got another slide? Yeah, perfect. Thank you. Uh, we've got a next one coming up on August 16th at the Sylvan Community Center, and then we'll, uh, be coming in the fall on September 20th at Westwood Park.
August 16th. Can we work with the Veterans Center across the street to use their parking? Because there's not going to be much parking spaces, and I know Area 11 is going to be coming. They're going to have to drive, and there's not a lot of parking on that street because it's residential. So I'm just, and the parking lot, by the time they set up the booth that they had, plus the, the van, we're going to need more parking.
We have some traffic experts on our team here that we'll coordinate with, uh, to talk through parking.
And chocolate ice cream would be nice.
Just close Sylvan Road.
Yeah, this is close Sylvan Road.
Would definitely get a big turnout for that.
It might be big. Area 6 is going to come, and so it's, people are going to have to drive to get there because it's coming, they're coming from all over.
No, I appreciate those comments, and it's certainly something they'll talk to our staff team about. But, uh, great to have good success with an event.
Oh, it was wonderful.
And so, success usually builds on success, and, uh, so I, I hear you on that. But I'm glad we're having a couple more opportunities to have some ice cream with the community at different geographic locations and, uh, really kind of meeting people where they are. So, um, more to come on that, but thank, thanks to all the Council for your attendance and participation and support of this. Thanks to our staff team. Uh, this did come from Director Huber, is relative to the idea on this, working with her team to execute, as well as our wider team. Uh, there was a lot of participation on this event. I appreciate everyone's efforts on that. And that concludes my updates.
Great. Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is items requested by council members or future agenda items.
Anybody?
I have a question. A long time ago, we buried a time capsule. Did we ever unbury the time capsule? It was 25 years?
The one in here in City Hall that's in the end cap of the...
Is, oh, is it in City Hall?
It's at the end cap of the...
Have we opened it? Or is it still buried?